...to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Bourbon County Committee of January 17th, I A M. We have public work underway in the late, so we'll get started. Uh, approval minutes, please.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from last January 10th meeting.
I second that motion. In discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
How's them boys? Alright, signature of accounts payable and payroll. That's what Allison's got in front of him. How's Frank young this morning?
Pretty good.
Good. Good to see you. Finally did get some work out of that guy, finally. Why am I there where we can watch you?
I have to watch you.
Oh, yep.
Not always the same color.
I don't know if I'm assigned.
They say I've already signed, oh.
See my scratch in all of here anyway.
This was in the Dropbox.
Okay.
I think it's Karen and the point.
Good.
Karen and the point.
Okay.
As your nine years. For township vision. And that was just dropped off this morning also.
Okay. Everything confidential. You can open it here. I don't know of anything that's very confidential at this desk, so, in my opinion. Yes. Yes. Morning, Clifton.
Hello.
Come in, Eric.
I had questions on this.
Okay.
On 113. Ascension via Christie Hospital, Pittsburgh, twenty eight hundred seventy-five dollars. There was one, two, three, four, five SANE exams. We were charged for. Uh, no, I'm sorry. Three SANE exams, two attorney contracts. And then, we were charged the same thing by C H C. A little later through it. C H C, uh, and I think it is the same invoice number. Zero zero one zero four five two zero zero. One four five two zero zero. C H C, SANE exam, attorney contract, seven twenty-five, seven twenty-five, fourteen hundred fifty dollars to C H C. Same invoice, same date, six, seven SANE exams. I'm pretty sure we didn't have seven rapes in the same day. I don't think we did, anyway, which is what a SANE exam is. It's a rape kit.
We'll ask the attorney about this.
Um, and then there was a five thousand dollar charge by the engineers for north of the...
The sidewalk.
Sidewalk. And I'd be curious to what that five thousand dollars was for.
Well, Frank, you want to explain? I think I know what happened here. That was original when we went out for bid and the drawing of the plans, et cetera, that at one time we had to ask Ag Engineering to get involved, and we decided we didn't need you. Correct?
That was for the design, plan development, the bidding, contract preparation, advertisement, pre-bid conference.
So we just paid you after the fact? I guess, long time? Is that, is that what, okay, it's fine.
You were aware of it all, Eric? You weren't aware of all that?
Uh, there was, there was, uh, there was one other on here, but, uh, the main one was the SANE exams, um, all under the same invoice, all on the same day.
Okay, I'll check with the attorney first.
What is that exam?
It's a rape kit, rape exam. It's exam. It's all, and it can only be performed by a SANE nurse, which is S A N E.
Okay.
That is.
Okay. So we'll table that until review?
Yeah, I'm not, well, I'm not gonna sign them.
Hey, Eric Bailey, Road and Bridge Report.
Alright. Give you an update. We're back, as you can tell, on the sidewalk. Our plan is stay with it now till we're, we're done, as long as Mother Nature will allow. Looks like next week we have some very frigid temperatures coming, but we'll see. It was also supposed to rain yesterday, so, um, we'll just see what we get and play it day by day and, and get done as much as we can get done, so. But we are moving forward. It is gonna be a little bit of an inconvenience. We're gonna take up some parking stalls here and try and, uh, we're gonna try and maybe lay it all, uh, do all sidewalk, then do all gutter, and then do all parking in one, you know, do the sidewalk in one pour, gutter in one pour, and parking in one pour, so. Uh, that's kind of where we're at. That's our plan as of right now. Our interim bridge inspections, uh, we have nineteen of them being done by Schwab Eaton. You guys have already approved the contractor, what have you, on that, but they will be here today to pick up the files and start on the interim bridge inspections. Just wanna let you know in case somebody calls and says, "Why is somebody out looking at our bridge?" That way, you, you know what's taking place, so. Also, it's time for a five-year solid waste plan update. It's due May fifteenth. I've already reached out to Ag Engineering, and they're gonna help us, um, get that finalized and get that turned back into K D H E, so, uh, just wanted to let you know that we are moving forward with that and, uh,
Good.
Get that taken care of. Nashville trip for the crusher training, Cleman Crusher. Just wanna let you know that we went last week. Very, very, very informative training. Hand, they actually had a machine there, so we were able to have hands on and, uh, also built some relationships with some, uh, other, um, individuals that own the same crushers that we own. One individual's out of Springfield, then the other one is, uh, Crossland Construction has one as well, so, um, very good training. Uh, we're actually making some adjustments on our machine today and, uh, we'll be getting crushing up at Beth Quer here either latter part of this week, first part of next week, and, uh, and get to producing some more rock.
How's your surplus holding out, okay? Other locations?
It's, yeah. It's dwindling.
At least you have some.
We have some. We do. We, we have a nice little pile down at Thomas, and we have a nice pile out at Blake, but they, they are dwindling down. I mean, when you pull out of them, but
That's what, yeah.
We'll get one up at Beth, and then, uh, we got a little bit at Shepherd, so. We're starting to have a little bit of rock at our quarries that we can get on, get on the road.
That's important.
Um, speaking of that, crusher and getting rock on the road and what have you, I'd like to get permission from you to sell our, uh, old crusher and our screen plant and our screen machine producer. Uh, I'd like to sell it on Purple Wave, and then, the funds that we receive out of that, I'd like to apply that towards a belly dump and a truck for the belly dump. With the rock that we're able to produce with our new crusher, I feel we can utilize another belly dump and, uh, get more rock on the road, so. With that, I'm asking for your permission to be able to sell the old crusher and, and, uh...
I know you have my vote.
I make a motion to allow, um, Eric to sell the, uh, old crusher and screens.
There's the numbers if you want them, right there.
It is a forty, forty-three T crusher. Uh, two thousand and eleven spider screen plant, a two thousand and seven screen machine producer. And, and to sell it at his discretion as far as Purple Wave or heavy bid or whatever. I don't care. As far as I'm concerned, just sell it.
My second.
In discussion? All in favor? Aye? Okay.
So how mu, I mean, approximate?
I couldn't tell you exactly for sure. We're probably, Jim, you have an idea on it?
Well, and that's tough. The Purple Wave will fool you when, when you expect well, or you don't, and you don't expect well. I've seen some equipment go to Old Mexico for a fortune, and I've seen some that should've, didn't do that well, so I wouldn't want to guess either.
Yeah.
You'll get enough to buy a truck and a trailer, but I wouldn't count a lot of surplus.
Right.
But it's a good time of year because they might be gearing up in South America to do some things, and that always helps our market, so.
Right, and I know we've had some local interest as well, um, or I say local, in the four-state area that have called and asked about it or reached out to us about it, so there is some interest out there.
Good. Great ideal.
When it comes time to buy, who knows what, who will be, like you say.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I predict it goes to South America, but I could be wrong.
Right, right. Um, also, doing a little ditching out there by the National Cemetery. We done a little project there.
Looks good.
Um, gonna work on a project out in Industrial Park from Liberty Bell and Jayhawk going, um, south all the way down, uh, to, I think Skitch owns the building now, but kind of down, niece, down in that area. So, got some sealed-in areas and what have you, and we need to get them opened up so the water will have a channel to flow in. Um, have a meeting with the property owner, excuse me, there at the corner of Jayhawk and Liberty Bell, right-of-way issues are kinda iffy, so I just want to meet with them and, uh, make sure we're all on the same page and ask for their blessing to be able to, a little bit of it's on their property as well, so. Try and get that corner cleaned up, get the trees out of the waterway and get it opened up so water can move more freely, and also kind of open up the site triangle there as well, so we can, people can see. There's a lot of traffic at that intersection, especially when trains get on there and what have you, and blocks the intersection, so.
Your operator out by the National Cemetery did a good job.
Okay.
Looked real good.
I will let them know that. Thank you.
Real good, yep.
Uh, anything for me? That's pretty much all I have.
At your convenience, I'd like to get a copy sometime of your updated, greater...
Maps?
Maps.
Yep.
No hurry. I'm just, I was just curious. I was down there looking for turkeys the other day, and I thought about it. I didn't know which area I was in.
Okay. I think that's John's area that you were in, but
Is it?
I think, but I'm not positive, so.
Okay.
I will get that for all of you.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all I've got.
Anybody else, anything? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
You bet.
Mr. Mike Quick, please.
Okay, you guys had a week to think about what we talked about last week with the N R P. Any more thoughts on where we want to be at? So we can get that rolling?
I mean, my opinion is, um, five thousand, five to seventy-five hundred, somewhere in there, on residential. And, um, either stay at the ninety-five percent for ten years or ninety-five percent for five and step down to ten. Because I, I, you know, I don't know the exact numbers, but at some point it is diminishing returns.
What do you recommend?
Well, I, I mean, I was fine with the way it was, just because, um, it's making people put an investment into their, into their property. The seventy-five hundred, I think it's fine. If we go down below, you know, in the five, it's, it's probably still okay. Any less than that, I mean, it's, it's, we want people to invest in their property and do things that are gonna help, you know, their property and, and those things.
I like the ideal of the five and the ninety-five percent for five years, then pro-rate to the second five years, but I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do a ten-year total, five years at ninety-five, and then step it down, that's fine. It's just a little more work as far as that part goes, but.
Uh, do ninety-five for ten. Is that what we do for commercial, anyway?
Ninety-five for ten.
Yeah, for ten, yeah, for commercial.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, I don't, I, in my opinion, I would rather reward the residential than commercial. I mean, there's not that much commercial in Bourbon County.
Sure.
Ninety-five for ten be a great program.
And what, I mean, we looking at seventy-five hundred or five?
Five.
I prefer five.
Five.
Maybe we get some incentives, people start renovations.
So I make a motion to change the N R P program. Now, it does has to, it does have to go to the school boards.
Right, we'll have to take this, once we say it, we'll have to go to
To get their approval also.
Juco and get them to renew it.
You'll do? You will need a commissioner to do it?
I will go, but it'd be nice to have somebody go with me if we, if we do it.
I can go with one of you.
Yeah, I want to be, it doesn't matter.
Um, I'd make a motion to change the N R P, um, just the residential portion to five thousand and ninety-five percent for ten years from the, uh, from what it is today.
And we'll leave the commercial at fifteen?
Leave the commercial, the fifteen at ten years.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And we need a motion. I can go with him.
Uh, I...
We gotta figure out when the next meetings are, so we can, and I'll, I'll figure all that out.
Yeah, but they gotta give me permission to go.
I'll make a motion to allow Chairman Harris to, uh, to attend those meetings with Matt to try to get the other taxing entities to, entities to go along with this plan.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor? Aye? Thank you, Matt.
I'll get, schedule those, and I'll get with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Laura Holdridge, please.
Morning. Good morning. I'm here this morning to talk about the, um, survey reviews. We had gotten a letter from our reviewer that said that he was going to raise his rates, and I believe that Frank had addressed the commissioners about, you know, the, the time that it takes to get a survey from getting it reviewed. By the time they get it done, Jim, our reviewer, had asked us to keep track of them, collect the review fees, so that way he only has to get two checks a year. We keep track of them, get them to him. By the time the mail back to, to him, then back to the survey company, and then back to us, it's probably about nine mail days, maybe sometimes twelve. There was several years ago that the, um, we could've opted out of having a review. Bourbon County at that time decided to stay in with the review. We have several, I did a quick survey on Friday after, um, visiting with, um, well, from the letter from that Jim got. There are a lot of counties that opted out of the review process. The surveyors, we're, we're running out of surveyors, and they have to get their certifications. So, they are licensed surveyors. They can trade services with other surveyors when a new land is, a new parcel is being done. They can go to another surveyor, have another surveyor review it without having a cost to them, and get it to us quicker, get it put of record quicker, so our constituents can get it put of record quicker. I think that that's kind of where Frank is at, is wanting to try to get the surveys on quicker, and with the fee, because they pass that fee on to the constituents who is having the survey done, and, um, let them work it out, having the reviews done, instead of us having a county reviewer, which is out of town, and we're kind of being held up by mail.
So then, sorry, what, what exactly is a survey process? Is that, who is that guy that...
It is James Schmidt out of Mount City, or Parker, Kansas, and, um, when a survey is done, they re, have a, the reviewer review their work to make sure it's correct. And I don't know what his turnaround time is.
And it, who does that cost? Does that cost county?
No, it does not cost the county.
Who's paying for that, then? State?
The person getting the survey.
The person getting the survey.
Okay, so it's their choice to have somebody else review it, or...
We, the county chose to keep having the surveys reviewed. We had an option several years ago. The state gave the counties, all the counties options to opt out of reviews or stay as reviews. We chose to stay as a review. Most counties, out of all the counties that responded quickly, if you went by percentage-wise, ninety percent of them opted out of the reviews.
Because it's just taking too much time?
It's taking too much time. They have to get their certification. You know, they are licensed surveyors. We should be able to trust their work, because if, once it goes to the mapping end of it, which is through the appraiser's office, when they get a split and they send it to the mapping part, if it's not right, it's gonna fall back on them, and then they're gonna have to make the corrections and pay for everything that's been done, so it falls back on them if it's not correct. You know, our mail service is, you know...
So he's not going out and finding pins, or he's just reviewing, reviewing your paperwork, more or less, right?
That's what Mr. Smith says.
Yeah, he's not...
He's not actually going out and doing any.
He's been retired for several years. This is a side, side hustle. And he does more than just you guys. He does, I don't know, three or four counties, so.
But it is an additional cost.
It is an additional cost added on, yes.
And he's just basically reviewing your paperwork.
He does, uh, I'm not gonna fault Mr. Smith. He does a pretty good job. He, uh, goes through, checks for errors, checks our closure calculations. He does a little more than the statute requires. The statute just requires that he, that makes sense, but he'll, he will go ahead and look for errors, which most surveyors do. But I guess what we're doing with the counties around you, including Crawford, Cherokee, Omen, Neosho, Allen, is working with other surveyors when a review is required, and we just trade back and forth. Like, sometimes we send them more, they send us, but, they would rather, we would rather do that, and I, I'm not trying to get out of the review process. I'm just trying to get out of your review process, because you have restricted us to a certain guy who's not around here, and the mail's just killing us. Uh, we've had stuff lost in the mail. A standard, Laura's very good about working her end of it, but we tell clients two to three weeks is what it's gonna take to get this thing recorded after we're done with it. And sometimes that's not acceptable. We dedicate an employee, charge a client, drive it to Mr. Smith, drive it back. We've done the hand-carry routine, but cut that two to three weeks off, but, and we'll still do that if we need to, but we'd like for it to be our choice where we go with it, because there are closer people in that area. And I'm, I'm not criticizing Laura's department at all. She's dealing with what you guys adopted several years ago. Just wanted to inform you that you're kind of a little island here amongst the eight or nine counties that are still doing this.
Eliminated it to one reviewer.
And, and legally, we can opt out?
Legally, you can opt out.
You can totally opt out of the review altogether. There are a couple of counties that do that. I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just asking you to loosen up the requirements so we can handle it ourselves at a lower cost to the client and speed at this time.
I'd make a motion to, um, to opt out of the, uh, individual reviewer, survey, review person, to allow them to pick their own.
How many counties have just totally opted out?
Um, the ones that got back to me...
I mean, if we can legally totally opt out, why don't we just totally opt out?
Fifteen, uh, completely out out of twenty-one.
That would make it simpler, anyway. Just, just totally opt out. I don't, Justin's not hollering over there, so.
He will.
And...
Oh, there he's standing up.
Now you paged him.
I'm all for expediency, whatever speeds it costs us, but I'm just, you know, Ag Engineering has been an asset to our community for a long time now, so whatever it is you suggest, I think we should follow. He's, I mean, Ms. Holdridge and him are the experts, so whatever they are suggesting is, and the law is, you can take any option.
Yeah, and I think we would want to have a resolution to opt out, and then they can work it out amongst themselves.
I would defer Laura's judgment on that. If she wants you guys to totally opt out, that's fine. If she wants to maintain the review and let us handle it, that's fine. Both of those would be in agreement with what we're doing now.
What's your recommendation?
You're the expert. I mean, I think...
I think the review, and I'm, I'm not just talking for Ag Engineering, I'm talking for the profession. The review does catch an error every once in a while.
Okay.
And errors are a mess, because we, when we let that thing go out the door, it goes, God knows where, and there, I can't think of over maybe once or twice in the last little sixteen years that we had to really clean something up. And I got one right now I'm working on that happened in two thousand and six by another survey company. And there's at least five deeds out there that's been going around since oh-six, changing hands, and they're all wrong. So, I guess I wouldn't, personally, I would say maybe keep the review, if that's alright with Laura and not mess with it.
Fine by me.
Let us figure out who does it, because we got, hopefully, we still have necessary around in five years, and we can find another one.
Have them review it themselves and, and we're out of it completely, and...
I believe that was Clifton's motion. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And I personally want to compliment your registered deeds, because we don't get the cooperation out of all counties that we do in Berres, and most of the southeast Kansas counties are really good. You go up north, they're gonna let you do it, so.
Thank you. So when it comes to us, it'll be already reviewed, and we won't have to worry about it. That'll cut down on it and
Great ideal.
Um, we'll inform Mr. Schmitz. I'll get a letter and then get you, uh, Mr. Chairman, to sign that, and, um, or does Ashley need to do that, or can I write that, to say that we're no longer gonna have him?
You can write that if you want.
Okay, and let them know that we're no longer gonna go through this review and that they're gonna be responsible for their own reviewing.
Okay.
And then I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Come in, Eric.
Jennifer's absolutely awesome. She heard you wanted a greater map, so here is all the...
She heard you wanting the Grager map, so here is all the Grager.
Good, good, good.
Grager operators and the maps.
Thank you very much.
There you be.
Okay, thank you. Jim Harris, organizational changes. Justin, would you like to come in and listen to this, please, or comment or anything before I start?
As long as we follow the law, statutory minimums, that type of thing, I can sit here and make sure we abide by that and the motions are clear.
Okay. I'm going to read these changes and this will be my motion and I'd like for you to listen and make sure it's statutory okay.
Sure.
Is that correct? Okay, all right. We will start with the EMS director. Again, this is always my motion. Will report directly to the county commission, no longer to CFO. The CIO will have a title change to Chief Operation Officer and will be in charge of the custodian and building maintenance and report, and, I'm sorry, and building maintenance will report to COO. So that person is charged with all building maintenance and we're going to put a plan together, 10-year plan, if we'd hopefully save this building. We haven't done a lot since I've been here, which is commission fault. Transferring to the CFO is human resource duties, benefits, employee onboarding, liability, insurance, and workman's comp will be handled all by the CFO, which answer directly to the commission. As you know, our emergency management person retired. We're splitting those duties. The COO and CFO, which the COO has been the deputy for 10 years, COO will be assisting in grant writing and paperwork. And we will have Mr. Brian Allen, can I mention his name, as the active emergency preparedness director, which will be certified through the state, who will continue as Allen. Brian will do a great job for us.
I think you want to clarify that that'll be a part-time position to.
Yes, that is a part-time position, see, Frank. That is a part-time position. He will continue his duties in IT, but he will be a part-time emergency preparedness Answering to, that's my motion.
Second.
Discussion?
He seconded it. Do we open it for discussion?
Any discussion?
I have a comment after.
Yeah, go ahead.
I also think that you might want to think about payroll, just because of the changes in the clerk's office and what's going on with that and the resignations and things of that nature. You might want to think about taking him out at this point from the clerk. I think the clerk, the new clerk's got a.
I haven't been noticed with any resignations.
Okay. That might have been what you want. Never mind.
He's not been.
Okay.
So add it.
Pardon?
Add it, add payroll.
Can I? I have resigned.
He might.
The other.
Sorry.
You're actually.
Here. Just so they can hear.
My course not long enough. I have submitted my letter of resignation as the county clerk. My staff has also taken other jobs. So we are all leaving. We are currently training someone for accounts payable and payroll, so if you're going to change that, we would need to redo that because she's been, she trained last week on payroll and accounts payable, so.
Okay. Well, I may say publicly, I regret your resigning. I enjoyed working with you. I hate that you're leaving us, but I understand. So you've been great to work with, so.
Statutory AP cannot be taken from the clerk.
Right.
So that's something that the clerk's office will have to, statutorily, they're assigned that task. So you can't, you can't, the commission can't take that task away from the clerk. Payroll is not assigned statutorily to the clerk's office. And you can, we can go back and review these at a later time. I don't know when Ashley's last day is, but.
February 3rd.
Okay, so you can come back in.
February 3rd.
And your staff, same date or?
Courtney, this is actually her last week. And Rita will be January 3rd.
Okay. So you can, you could actually wait till the February date. I don't know what the local Republican Party is going to have to do with the appointment of the new clerk, but, you know, with all that's going on, I think it would be wise to, you know, have those things taken away temporarily and then if we need to reassign those at a later time, you can. I mean, the last time this discussion occurred, you had Ashley come in to the position and this time around, I think it'd be maybe wise to do what the commission is talking about and having those, just so the clerk, the new clerk can get up to speed quickly.
So what do we not mention, besides payroll, what have we?
Well, there's other things that the clerk's office is responsible for election, homestead exemption, I think registrations.
That's statutory though.
Yeah, that's all statutory.
So what else that we haven't moved that's non-statutory required to stay with the clerk?
I think you've got everything that I'm aware of that is statutory, non-statutory you're moving at this point.
If we do payroll.
Payroll is the only one you haven't discussed that could be moved that hasn't been. And you might want to wait until after Ashley resigns or what her last day is.
Discussion about what the commission want to do. You want to wait, you want to do it now? I mean, what's?
Well, I think the ones, I added payroll for the discussion. I mean, I guess you should vote on the motion and then maybe go back and talk about payroll.
Yeah, let's vote on my motion.
I second it.
I'm going to, I did want to say that, I mean, we already mentioned his name in public.
Yeah, well, you're going to.
So the gentleman's name, he's still going to perform his other duties, so he's getting added duties.
Well, yeah, so let's, let's talk about, let's talk about.
Saving the county quite a bit of money by doing that in-house, so.
You're talking about a job description, not job performance or job. I mean, so you could actually mention his name in the open session.
I ask you if I could.
Yeah, so Brian Allen is taking over the emerg, I just wanted to clarify that he's
not, unless he chooses to, I guess, he's not switching jobs, it's just going to be an added duty in our attempt to save money. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that.
Good, thank you.
Okay, done.
I have a motion and I have a second.
Hmm?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Do we want to talk about payroll today or talk about, think about it? What do you gentlemen like to do?
Well, if there's going to be no one in the clerk's office.
There will be one person. We're training, yes, we've been training someone for accounts payable and payroll.
Well.
Hold on a second, just.
But I will say, we're taking everything else out of payroll.
To have a clerk.
It's going to be very hard.
I think you probably should, getting close to executive session time, because I think you might want to name that individual, talk about their job, job function, job performance, qualifications. I mean, I think it's important for Ashley to go in and talk about that person.
Okay.
Because I don't think anybody knows what's happening.
Okay.
All this information is new and you're going to name a specific person and if they're qualified to do the job function.
Okay. We need a minute, I'm going to go into the conversation now.
Well, that's up to Ashley, if she wants to talk about that. I think it's important that we know who the person is.
If you want to, I'd be glad to.
Okay, it's your choice.
Hello?
If I was in the commission's position, I'd want to know if that person's qualified or not and if they're capable of doing payroll.
10 minutes long enough, you think?
Yeah.
Make a motion to go into executive session, or actually, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session between Jim Harris organizational changes and Nelson Blythe move meetings.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Now I make a motion to go into KSA, executive session, KSA 75, S 43, 19B1. To discuss personnel matters of individual and elected personnel to protect their privacy, three commissioners and county clerk Ashley Shelton.
You don't, you don't need me, but I want to make sure that you're actually talking about job, if they're able to do the duty or not.
I'd like to have you in there.
Job.
If you want me in there, I can be.
Job duties and we'd also add county, Justin Meeks.
And job, and job.
Job.
Performance, job abilities.
Job performance, job abilities. Be for 10 minutes. We will return here at 9:49.
All in favor? Yeah. Did you second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1153.25]
Make a motion to resume normal session with action.
Second.
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on favor? Aye?
Aye. I make a motion to add, to move payroll along with the other duties that we did previously.
I second.
Move payroll to the CFO.
Yes.
Did you second it?
Yes.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Okay. Nelson Blythe.
Yeah, just requesting that the commission meeting on the 21st, February 21st be rescheduled to the 24th. I'm going to be out of town.
Still 9:00 a.m. on the 24th?
Yeah, yep.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion.
I work on the 24th.
You work on the 24th?
He works on the 24th, so he can't be here.
So it's whatever you guys want to do, I don't care.
24th is on Friday.
Yeah.
What time do you get off?
They've switched my schedule.
Okay. What time do you get off on?
I'll be 7:00 to 7:00 on Friday. I mean, I may get home at 10:00, I may get home at 5:00, I don't know.
Okay.
We can hold Tuesday without you, we can hold Friday without him.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
Let's just hold it Tuesday.
Well, if we're going to hold it without somebody, might as well not reschedule it and hold it without somebody.
I agree. Leave it as is, so, okay.
Okay.
We're trying to not make any too important.
You can always call in, you're important enough.
You can call in.
Yeah, you can call in if you're.
We'll leave your roads alone.
We won't hang up on you, maybe.
You can't call in legally, you can call in and be part of the meeting.
Yeah. Okay, moving right on. Susan Bancroft. Morning.
We have met with the second broker that was a local individual. Really, they're both going to provide the same type of services. The local broker has committed to not taking any commission for a year. I think I forwarded that email to you guys. The advantage of the local person is they are right here. The other ones in Pittsburgh, it, you know, they're going to provide about the same services, so.
I appreciate staying local.
Yep. Stay with the local guy.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, you will need a motion. Clifton, do you have any?
I, well, I'll have a discussion after the motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to use a local broker for a consultant on analyzing our insurance, possible moving, leaving the state, possibly not. But utilizing a local person with no fees, I appreciate that.
No information for a year?
He wouldn't get it anyway because it's with the state plan. So really, your first year is going to be analyzing all your plans. What you could move immediately is some of our ancillary products that we have just to get us on one group. But the problem is, is the state provides a lot of that. He has discussed if we have a certain group that we've worked with for a really long time that he would forego, you know, taking the commission and make sure. So one person I can think of that has been with us a long time is AFLAC. And basically, he would work with them to say, okay, that one is yours, and so.
I second your motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, until, I mean. So it's around $60,000, the commission. So to say he's not taking the commission the first year is no different than any other broker.
Right.
So that's not a benefit at all.
Right.
Now, if he wants to do that for the next year and put that in writing and guarantee that, that's the only way I would do it. Because I think that's just a, that's, that's, that's not.
Yeah.
No fees, that's nobody, nobody charges fees. So that's not a big deal.
No, yeah.
But the no commission thing, unless I see that in writing and guaranteed and notarized, that's just nothing, so.
The local option is not going to be any more expensive than the Pittsburgh option, is that right, or is it, or is it not?
Same procedure, same service.
It's really, yeah, it's really kind of the same. There is some of the things that the other people were willing to do is really get involved in the employee benefit, Employee Navigator, which is an online platform that really helps us. Once we go, if, if we go off the state plan, of course, that's the big question. If we go off the state plan, that Employee Navigator platform is going to be very important for us when we're doing 1094, 1095 reporting. And so they were willing to help us try and figure out a feed into our current payroll system. And I asked Don if he was willing to do that, and they do have people that will also help from that perspective as well.
It's the same service.
Yeah, it's the same service, yeah.
I just don't like the idea of somebody saying something when I know that that's.
Yeah, I got it.
Anyway.
Well.
I mean, I want to see it in writing, and I want to see it for next year, not this year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Susan. I think, just you might recall, you probably were involved, three years ago, this broker, this agent worked with us and told us that we should stay with the pool. Now, if we stay with the state pool, there's no commission for anybody down the road.
Mm-mm.
My opinion, out of, out of towner, it's to their advantage to move us. That's where the money's going to come in later. This, this agency already told us once not to move, so that agency's not doing it just for the money. And I'm not saying the other one would either, but there's no advantage for them, us staying with state pool.
Well, to be quite honest, I think we, we don't look at it just from a cost savings perspective also. We have to look at the, the entire picture of how this is going to affect our employees, and are they going to get a lot less benefit if we move out?
Yeah.
And so it's, it's, it has so many different factors that have to come into play when we're looking at this, to have the least disruption for our current employee.
And either agency or its consultants, we're unhappy for six months, we tell them go away.
Yeah.
Correct?
Right.
There's no contract, so, okay.
So.
I would say go with, most of us know him, and I think he'd be fine. I think he'd be best to work with.
I will work towards getting him to maybe do a second year if we were to move from the state plan.
Is that a motion or did I make a motion?
You made the motion, I seconded it, and then he had discussion.
Okay, we've had discussion, we've had a motion and a second, my memory's terrible. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
I have one other thing.
Okay.
This didn't make it in the packets, but Blythe had asked me to explain the State of Kansas food sales tax reduction, that when you go to Walmart now, you're seeing two different tax rates on your, and I've had several people call me about this. And so I just tried to put together like a, kind of a chart that shows if you had food, if you were purchasing food, it's a consumption of food is how they look at it. They say, any businesses who sell food products for human consumption are being taxed differently. And so a portion of that gets a reduction over the next three years in the state sales tax. Your local sales tax stays the same. And so this chart kind of shows how that breakdown is and why, why you're getting a different rate. I'll pass that around so you each have a copy of that.
I attached that, but I put all the documents in one.
In one?
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't see it. Okay, okay.
I thought I said them all together.
Okay, I just didn't see it, sorry, Ashley. And there's a link at the bottom that takes you to the publication that talks about the Food Sales Tax Reduction Act. And at the very back of it, it tells you, it gives you some examples of product lists. So it tells you what's going to be fully taxed and what's not going to be taxed. And so it's really just more informative for consumers that may be seeing different tax rates on their, their bills going forward and how that's going to change each year going forward. It's like 2% each year it's going to change. So I'll try and get this up on our website so that people can kind of refer to it and have reference if they have any questions. Do you guys have any questions? Okay, thank you.
I don't. Thank you, Susan. Shane Walker.
I'm going to bring Laura and Matt in here, we're going to go over something with you guys.
Okay.
Over the weekend, it was brought up that mapping is not important for our county. It's, should be a second thought or an afterthought. I'm going to explain why the mapping's important and how it flows and to who uses it and for what reason. Her maintaining the road records, we have to know what roads are open, what roads are closed, what roads are railroads, what are farm roads. They have to be in the 911 system. The number one thing those maps are for is 911. And if they're not accurate, and your wife has a heart attack, and you call, and we have a paramedic that moved here from Georgia, they're the people that tell them how to get there. And if those maps don't work, you know what happens. You know what happens because you're in law enforcement if you can't find somebody. Matt uses them for taxes. That's how we decide where property lines are. That's where we decide where we have roads. All of that stuff ties together and then goes into public works. Every single facet of what's done in this building is done with those maps. All the property information is stored in those maps. It's not just a printed map on the wall, it's an actual live database. And to say it's not necessary, or it's not important, is pretty far out there to understand, especially when it comes to first responders.
Well, I would hope the folks who made those comments don't understand, and will come up and ask questions, we hope, so.
Yeah, but, you know, they can, they can tell you the importance of it, and what she's doing is very important for you guys to make informed decisions about what you want to do with the roads to save money.
Yeah.
Because you can't do your job if you don't have that.
We appreciate it very much, because when 911 comes looking for me, I want them to find me.
Yeah.
So, I'm old.
I think all of us do.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions, anybody? Thank you, Shane, Matt, and Laura.
There's a certain population that don't want 911 to find them when they're looking for them.[1309.46][1309.46](Laughter).
Well, I can appreciate that, too.
That's really funny on a really big level.
It is, and, you know, that makes sense. I hadn't thought about that, but you're right. Don't find me, please.
Yeah, that's really funny.
Justin, you're up, sir.
I'm going to need an executive session, I'd ask for you to amend the agenda to put me at the end so that we can let people go. There won't be any action when we get out, it's just discuss some litigation issues.
Make a motion to move Justin Meeks to the end of the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment section, please.
You have a subject that's. I'm Clint Walker, and you, the subject is near and dear to my heart, is 911 and how to locate things. And I give you, I had a, one of our fine officers come out to my house one day, and he didn't know where this place was, and he had GPS and everything. And my one brain cell kicked in, and I was able to say, tell him where it was. And I even said, I have a key to the gate and house. So we rode up there together, and we took and went in, and everything was fine. And he brought me back to my place, and then he asked me where the nearest highway was. You know, sorry. Number two, when deciding on roads and fixing them, grading them stuff, and I got to say that we've made great strides. Back some time ago, when my aunt had a serious medical problem, ambulance got stuck up there, not down her road, on a main road. And when we have stuff like that happen, that stinks, and she died, by the way. And so those are, those things are important. Last but not least, GPS does not tell you exactly where you're going. My wife can plug our places, and we wind up clear down in the valley. No, we don't long there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Ann, Ann Dare. The organizational changes are those affect, are all of them effective immediately?
Yes.
And will there be something, because I couldn't take notes fast enough, will that be available through Cora?
Yes.
Is that how I would go about?
I mean, you'd get the minutes, that's pretty much all the.
As soon as these other two approve this letter under my time, you can have a copy of it, but I want them to look it over.
Yes, okay, okay, that's, okay. No, that's, that's fine, I was just.
And there's not like a formal document, is that, I don't think there's a formal document, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, okay. No, I just, I guess, just so that I understand job duties of everybody now, so, okay, all right, thank you.
I got to be really careful.
Job descriptions would be open record, job performance and ability to do that job, you'd probably want to go into executive session with them.
You want to look at this before.
I know, I just want to make sure.
There won't be any names on it or anything?
No. I just alerted it all to department heads. It'll bring up under my time, but. Pardon? Those are all job descriptions. Yeah. So once I get there, last thing, I can send it out to department heads, then it's public information. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. At it, Ann?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, young lady. Good morning.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mandy Schumaker of the Bourbon County Conservation District. I've been with the district for 10 years. We've always sent invitations to y'all to attend our annual meeting to kind of help guide you guys on what we do, who we are, where the money is being spent when we present our budget. So my board wanted me to come before you guys today and invite you to our annual meeting, which is Saturday. I have the invitations here. Bob Larkin mentioned that you work usually on the weekends and probably would not be able to attend, but I would love to give you guys an invitation to come see, we're going to present our poster awards for the poster contest that the kids did. And we also give conservation awards out this weekend, and it's going to be a really cool thing, and I'm sorry, I'm going to miss the Chiefs game, but I really don't want to go, but I'm going to, so, anyway. Thank you, guys. It's at 5:30.
Here, I'll take.
Thank you, guys, very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mandy, thank you, thank you. Morning, Sheriff. Morning.
What you have before you is the attorney that I have representing the Sheriff's Department in regards to the sheriff's audit that was done or issued to the county attorney last year in July. That is his response. We are requesting to be on the agenda for next week. He wasn't able to make it down today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mark McCoy. And if, Ashley, if you could, once you have that stamped filed in your office, if I can get a copy of that, please. Thank you.
A stamped filed copy of this.
I got you. Yes, Mark McCoy. Casey coming back.
Yeah.
Good morning. My name's Mark McCoy. I have two things I'd like to address. The first one is emergency management. Just to let you know, for the last six and a half years, I have been in and around the facility supporting and working with Will Wallace. I have been privileged to be on multiple exercises with him, learned a lot with him. I stand ready to help Brian Allen in any way. I think you've picked a very solid person who is very committed to Bourbon County and doing the right thing. And so anything I can do to support him, I'm happy to do.
Thank you.
I work with the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, with the fire departments, with the rural folks. We've gone out together and provided food and hot coffee with, with the fire departments, both north and south, and, and so I think it's very important that we do have somebody, and we have two, as you've said. We have an emerg, a deputy emergency manager who is very experienced and very knowledgeable in that area, and I think you've done the right. that area, and I think you've done the right thing. The second thing I wanted to do was talk about the, uh, letter that I received on January 12th, which I was notified by the county clerk that she would be resigning effective February 3rd. At that time, I notified the executive group in the Bourbon County Republican Party that we would need, need to be convene, convening a caucus for the purpose of appointing someone to the governor for their approval to replace the county clerk. That meeting will be conducted on the 26th of January at 6:00 PM at the Empress Center. All of the precinct people in Bourbon County, there are 18 precincts, there's two precinct people per area, there are 36 potential voters that will vote on candidates. So, I'm, I'm saying that we need professional individuals who are interested in this. So, any and all individuals interested in being considered for this position, they can email me, or they can call me. My email is M-A-R-K-M-O-N-H-M-A-N-Y at yahoo.com. They can call me or text me, if they like to do that, with their information about who they are, why they're running, if they have a resume, please include that. My, my cellphone number is 620-719-7841. The Bourbon County Republican Party is very familiar with the process of replacing, uh, Republican individuals who have been in office. We have done that twice for our county attorney. We have done that for our county clerk. We have, um, uh, I believe those are the, those are the, the, the two positions that we've done, and not just once, but multiple times. So, we, we are very experienced in this. We take it very seriously. If any of the 36 voters cannot be there, they must submit a proxy form. We will have a credentialing group at their table, so the person must have their proxy, uh, they, I hope they can still come in here and have it notarized. Our, our clerk is very kind to do that. But your proxy, if you are one of the 36 voting people and you cannot be there, you can give your proxy to another committee man or committee woman. However, a committee man or committee woman can only bring with them two additional proxy forms. So, if someone likes Mark, I'm, I'm not a committee man or committee woman, and they say, "Well, can I just give it to you?" The answer is no. You must give it to a in-place committee man or committee woman. I can help you with directing how to, how to get that to them, though. So, uh, the, the length of time is, is to be determined. We will, we will open up the meeting at 6:00 PM, uh, and then anybody who's interested in that will have an opportunity to be able to, to talk to us and explain to us for up to five minutes as to why we should consider them for the position. There'll be a Q and A, and then we will go into a closed session for voting. The voting is a private session. Also, at the 13th congressional district, which we are part of, there are 11 precincts in Bourbon County that make up the 13th congressional district. Our senator, Richard Hildebrand, resigned, and, uh, his position must be replaced by the 25th of this month. So, on this Sunday, the 22nd, Crawford County, Cherokee County, and 11 of the precincts within Bourbon County are called to a convention in Cherokee County at the, uh, Columbus High School at 3:00 PM on Sunday, the 22nd. A convention will be convened for the purpose of nominating an individual to go to the governor, who, who will be appointed as the new state senator for District 13. So, I, I'm appreciative for the opportunity to say that here in this public setting. I'm appreciative if our newspaper will be so kind as to notify that. So, any, any and all individuals interested in either of those should put their name in as soon as possible. Any questions? I might be available afterwards if the press table has any questions. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the time.
Any other public comments?
I have a couple of good, good comments.
Thank you.
On December 27th, during our winter event, I was driving out, I call it Condensary Road, I think it's 235th, and between, halfway between Osage and Poplar, I'm not sure many, how many times I went around in circles, but I ended up in the ditch on the west side, tail end. And I want to compliment every single, well, with the exception of two, every single vehicle that passed me by for the three and a half hours that I sat there in the ditch, stopped to make sure I was okay, and if they could help.
Good.
Here are the two exceptions. The two county vehicles that went by, county trucks, they weren't doing anything. And I, I'm sure it was black ice, you know, you kind of come up over a hill, you're accelerating, you hit that ice, round and round you go. But I have a couple of concerns. First off, AAA was not able to locate me anywhere. I gave them the exact location halfway between Poplar Road and, and Osage Road at 235th. They had to verify where I was at by their pinging, and I do have a five, a new, a new phone, it's a current phone, so it should have been able to be pinged. They couldn't find me. With that, that's why I sat there for three and a half hours. Finally, I just had to tell them who to send out, and he was there in five minutes. A gentleman, young gentleman had come by, don't know who, what his name is, but I thanked him for pulling me out of the ditch with a chain that he had, but come to find out, it had pulled one of my tires off, and so, I, I had to be towed into town. But I want to share with you a picture of the location that I have taken. And, hate to walk away, but there's a, there's a few pictures here. I slid off just forward of this culvert. If I had ended up on that culvert, it would have been a rollover. I think there should probably be a, um, a guard placed there. I don't know what the standard is, you know, what's the drop off for a guard, but there should be a guard there. And I've got some other pictures there, but y'all get the idea. The big concern is, do we have adequate wifi or adequate coverage? I mean, I was in the ditch, they could, I could talk to them, but they couldn't find me. So, we're talking about GPS upgrades and, and mapping and all that. Didn't do me any good. I wasn't bleeding or anything, so I didn't feel it was relevant to call 911. I guess I could have, but I had AAA, so I called, I called them first. It's my problem, so I fixed it. So, on another topic, we've had two sections of an employee handbook that's, that have been made public, and Justin knows that I have. Where'd he go? I've made comments on both sections, and I'm, I'm just curious as to why you would start from scratch. The Kansas Association of Counties, the, the League of Municipalities all have a word document that we could take as a framework and doctor, doctor up, change up to meet the county's needs. Why are we starting from scratch?
Kansas Association of Counties, that handbook was integrated into ours best practices. We took a look at that, took the best policies out of there, did, I mean, if you look at it, it mirrors it on some levels. I think the reason that we're going through each section is to give the elected officials and the department heads the ability to have input and see if we need to have any changes that affect Bourbon County employees specifically.
Okay.
That's why we're doing it. I mean, I, we could go through and just approve the whole thing, but I think it's just going by section by section, and really, the clerk is a big part of it, and so, we'll have to start with the new clerk and kind of get everybody to speak with that, too.
I appreciate the department heads looking at it, input, employees, it's important that we get it right.
There's been some interesting banter.
I don't think profitable is a, that a profitable relationship in the description of an outwit will employee is, is appropriate, but that's section two. The last thing I would like to mention is, uh, in the restructuring that you're doing, you need to make sure that we understand where our checks and balances are. If you're moving the payroll position over here, who, where, where is the check and balance? Who's going to reconcile the payroll account? Just like Ashley does with the, uh, accounts payable account, she may write the checks, but she has somebody else reconcile the account. Is that not right? So, we need to make sure those things are defined, so we, as a public, know where our checks and balances are.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Any more public comment? Patty?
Um, well, I will say...
Yeah?
We have to do it, you have to.
Um, just to your comment about the wifi, where he was talking about, I believe, is right in front of our house.
Well, then, why didn't you come out and help me?
I didn't, I didn't know you were there. But the wifi is spotty in that area. We have trouble in our house.
Maybe she recognized you.
More than we do. More than we do outside, but in our house, wifi is pretty spotty.
So, I'd like to say, I mean, I think we're using incorrect terms.
Okay.
Cellular, not wifi, that, and we have nothing to do with that.
Yeah. I, I understand, but I was just...
So, I just want to make sure we're using correct terminology.
That it is pretty...
I don't agree with you there, because we just spent a bunch of money to upgrade wifi with ARPA funds, and so, whatever that takes to make...
No, that's not true, Michael. That's not true.
Shane?
Okay, okay.
Now, let's see, she might not be done.
No, that's fine. That's all.
Thank you, Patty.
Okay, well, Mike is talking about, happens all over the country. When you call dispatch on a cellphone, on a landline, it can trace it. On a cellphone, it triangulates it with three different towers. If you're in an area where there are not three towers that can hit it, it tries with two. So, it can get you into a relative area of where it's at, but it can't pinpoint. Up in the Kansas City area, anywhere you'd call it, pinpoint, because they have thousands of towers. We're real limited here.
Well, let's, let's make it very clear for the public that we have nothing to do with cellphone towers.
We don't own, lease, or operate cellphone towers.
I understand.
911 only functions with cellphone triangulation. The stuff we're talking about with ARPA funds is for radio repeaters for the sheriff and EMS, and we haven't even begun to put those repeaters in yet, so that's not even being addressed right this second.
So, if you would have called 911, or if you'd gotten a better response, I...
No, when you call 911 on a cellphone, the problem is, if you're in an area where it can only see you on two towers, it can't triangulate your exact position. And, and in our county, where we don't have that many cellphone towers, it, it will be spotty. That's...
And he's, he was in a low spot.
Yes, in a low spot.
And I, I'm saying it's AAA's problem.
Yeah, you know...
I'm not saying it's our problem.
Well, it sounded, in my opinion, it sounded like you were blaming us.
Oh, no, no, no. It's AAA's problem, but...
You know, Google Maps, the same problem. Their GPS is different.
But, so, when you call 911...
I did not.
We hope, we hope that our employed people know where they're going.
All deputies know Condensary Road between Poplar and...
And then, and know our roads and, and whatnot.
And with the updated map, these folks are working on.
One of the deputies, yes.
Yes, yes, I know where the updated map is. Okay. Well, I know where to go next time.
Okay, anything else? Public comment? Okay, moving along. Commission comment. Nelson?
I'll save it for next week.
Okay, no surprises.
Week after next, wait, yeah, next week, yeah.
Nelson? I just have a couple of little things here. I'd like to remind everyone of the town hall meeting on the 25th, 6:00 PM at the Empress Center. All three commissioners will be there. We've invited Ready to be there, and I'm inviting one of the realtors to be there. We're going to spend a little time talking about the housing assessment. Mr. Mark McCoy is going to moderate it for us. Maybe we stay on track on time, and we want to open up questions and answers. I invite any other governing entities that want to attend to be there. I have not issued any official invitations, but they're welcome to be there, city, college, U234, we're welcome. We want the public to be there, so hope that that will turn out.
This is a regular, we're having the regular meeting that morning, and this is...
Yes. Was that on Wednesday or Tuesday? Wednesday, yeah. We'll have our regular meeting Tuesday, and we'll have this town hall meeting Wednesday at 6:00 PM. So, also, we've got a, Bourbon County Commissioner got a letter from, I don't know if I can name her name. Can I name her name? Uh, from Ms. Karen DeCock. Resignation of position of trustee of the Pawnee Township for personal reasons. I'm going to give that to the clerk and let her notify all parties. It needs to be notified to replace that person. Here is the letter. I'm going to let the commissioners review it, and if they approve it today, or we can talk about it, but that's what I'd like to give to the department heads and the public regarding reorganization. Pretty simple, but it has all three of our names on there, so. And that translates to what I was reading from a little ago, which is pretty much the detail. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Do we need a motion for this, or just do it? We just, we already did it.
We already did the motion.
Yeah, we already made the motion. Okay. Here's the letter I'm handing out. It's with the county clerks, and now it's public information, so, uh, everyone can get a copy if they'd like to. And can we send this department in? Do I need to do that, or? I'll keep one for myself. I'll get you the rest of it. Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. Uh, again, I want to say I'm excited about Shane, Matt, Laura, working on these maps. I don't know who put that on Facebook. It wasn't important, but I'm sorry. They need to come forward and have a learning session of what those maps are used for, how important they are, so, and I would like to say publicly, I've enjoyed working with Ashley. I hate to see her go. I understand some of her points. God bless her, and her future success, and we're going to miss her, so. That's all I have. Executive session for Justin, is that what's left?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Justin? I mean that, actually. Don't forget to fill us with candy.
They're moving their cars.
They're working on the...
Breaking concrete. Just give me a second. I'm on the spot on something.
Take a five-minute break, you like.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. You don't mind.
I can do the boy, you're into it easy, so. I'm sitting in my office, I'm like, "What is that noise?" And I was just...
Parking lot.
Out at the culvert. If I had hit that culvert, it would have rolled. I don't think it's really... 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 I don't think it's really...
He was there in five minutes. Three and a half hours.
You've got a lot of phone numbers, a lot of people being included. I mean, come on.
But I, you know, I.
I have two grandsons that were there. But I understand how you did it, and how you want, why you wanted to do that.
I wasn't either. My car was.
My grandson's working.
Yeah, like maybe ten different dresses. Oh, gosh. Driving around. They don't make sense. They don't make sense. I don't put them there. I know. I know one. I'll, I'll come by. Really. You can't have an A-38 on my. Good. That's a, that's important, yeah. Nobody. I know. 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 Sometimes they don't even know they're there. They just. It's 26. So next Thursday.
Thank you, Ashley.
While we're waiting on Justin, I'll make a, a motion to, to allow us to attend the Republican Party meeting on the 26th at 6:00 PM together. I, I don't know how that works, because they're actually, there'll be county business taking place, no?
But you're not participating in it.
Oh, we aren't? Okay. Okay. So anyway, the three commissioners may be there. No business of ours will be taking place at that time.
The 26th?
Yeah.
At what time?
6:00 PM, I think you said.
Yes.
I second that motion.
6:00 PM.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yes, sir.
Who's good at detailing cars? I'm looking at a car of my son that's got some key scratches in it. The guy was going to do it, was excellent. He had knee surgery last week. I gotta find somebody else. We'll wait a month or two. Well, I'd get it done for a buy.
Yeah.
I don't know, man.
I don't know. There's a, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
Those, sorry, those scenic things, I was going to check, but she said that there were several of them, because it was like months ago.
That's what I assumed.
But she was going to pull that information for you.
But we shouldn't have from CXC and Ascension. My question whether CXC can actually review them.
She was going to pull that information.
Okay. Why did we pay their attorney? Anyway. Perfect. Thank you. I assumed it was months, but. What'd you tell me?
What'd you tell?
I think is what he said.
Pardon?
I think that's what he told me. I said, we had a very uneventful meeting yesterday.
I was going to say, maybe a copy.
As for an executive session for seven minutes for attorney-client privilege, possible litigation.
Three commissioners and you?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to go an executive session for consultation with attorney, KSA 75, 4319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for possible litigation. Be for seven minutes.
Well, it, it is litigation. It's a filed case.
Oh, okay. So for litigation, be for seven minutes. We return at 10:44?
And it's, it's public record.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. 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 Aye.
As for an executive session for seven minutes for attorney-client privilege, possible litigation.
Three commissioners and you?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to go an executive session for consultation with attorney, KSA 75, 4319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for possible litigation. Be for seven minutes.
Well, it, it is litigation. It's a filed case.
Oh, okay. So for litigation, be for seven minutes. We return at 10:44?
And it's, it's public record.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. 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 Aye.